So we are going to get started with our board meeting tonight. Tonight is Monday, August 5th, and we do have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. Thank you for those that came out this rainy, lovely Monday to join us tonight. So thank you. Do I have our first item of business is approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, tonight's agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, would you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely. And actually, first, I have a few new individuals in our district that I'd like to invite up and introduce to the community. And so Cynthia Maldonado and Dr. Amy Reid and Alex Hatstrom and Assistant Superintendent Nate Swenson, if you could all come up to the table, that would be great. So we had a wonderful spring of hiring. So that the community knows, we had three administrators retire. You can pull up extra chairs and sit at the table. We had a couple of our principals retire, our assistant superintendent retired. And then we are really excited about an addition that we're able to add into our system. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the principals and super excited to introduce Cynthia Maldonado. She's our new principal at Countryside Elementary. She comes to us immediately from South Washington County Public Schools where she was a principal at a Spanish immersion school, an entire immersion school. And so we're really excited that she has that background with immersion experience. She's been a principal for more than nine years, and so we're really super excited to have her here. I don't know if you'd like to offer anything else, Cynthia?
Do you mind turning your microphone on? Sorry to interrupt you. There we go.
No, it's all good. Should I scooch in? Can you hear me okay? So I just want to say I'm very grateful to be here. I love it. I live in St. Louis Park, so this is a nice, I know the area well, and Edina has been so warm and welcoming every single person, from the custodians to the front desk, to Dr. Stanley, to every single person. I've really felt warmly welcomed, family, kids. So I'm thrilled to be here. Countryside is a lovely school. I'm excited to have English and Spanish, not just Spanish, because that's, this is my 30th year in education, and I think it's really important. So I'm excited to be at Countryside. So thank you for inviting me to talk to you all today.
Great to have you here. And then we have Principal Dr. Amy Reid, and she is the new principal at Creek Valley. And Amy joins us from, most recently, the Anoka Hennepin School District where she was a principal at an elementary school with 1,200-plus students in the school, 72 sections, 42 sections of classrooms. And she has more than 15 years of experience as a principal, and we're just really excited to have her experience and have her join the community as well.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent Stanley and board members. Thank you for the warm welcome. I echo Cynthia's sentiments of just how welcoming it's been just to be part of the Edina family and the whole crew over here to get to know the leaders here and even the principals that we were in a meeting this morning and the collaboration that happens in the district is really special. I just left a PTO meeting where I had a student ask me to be a part of his podcast. So you're empowering leaders. And he said, can you be in a po, his name's Kai, will you be on a podcast with me and you can share your leadership with our school? And so kudos to the team for empowering the kids to be leaders and to thrive in our district. And thank you for the welcome and thanks for having me.
That's great. And then really excited to introduce to the community Alex Hatstrom. Alex is an individual that we brought in to the system for a new position that we have, which is our Emergency Management and Safety and Security Coordinator. Just really excited to be able to have him here to really help us continue to increase and enhance our efforts around safety and security. Alex comes to us, he is a former police officer in many different precincts. He, most recently, served as a police officer at MSP Airport, and he has experiences as, with the Metro Transit Department as well.
Yes, thank you Superintendent Dr. Stanley. That is correct. I come to you as a former police officer, and I'm excited to be here at the Edina Public School District as the new Emergency Management Safety Coordinator. And as I transition from my prior career into this one, I'm excited to be here and work with the staff of the Edina Public School District. And I think the creation and formation of this position is a testament to the safety and security commitment that the school district has to its staff and students. And thank you very much for the warm welcome.
And last but not least, I'd like to welcome Mr. Nate Swenson, our new Assistant Superintendent. Nate brings to us 17 years or more of administrative experience, and we're just so excited. He has hit the ground running, has been working with principals, working with cabinet members, working with the community. Wore just one of the best shirts ever to the Fourth of July Edina Parade. If, community, if you don't know what I'm talking about, just get out there and look at some of the pictures. And he, most recently, comes to us from Little Falls, has worked in Southwest Metro, in Eden Prairie Schools, worked a little bit north of us in Osseo Public Schools. So welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Stanley, and members of the board, thank you for the wonderful greeting. It's been a pleasure to be able to get to meet you all, learn a little bit about you as well. And I have just thoroughly enjoyed myself onboarding to Edina Public Schools. I get to work with these wonderful people. And in a system like Edina, there's no stop, so you just hit the ground and you, and you start going. And it has been fun to get to know my cabinet members as well. So thank you for the warm greeting, and I just am grateful for the opportunity to serve here.
No, I was just going to say on behalf of the board and community, we want to welcome you to our district, and we're thrilled to have you here. And hopefully, you'll acquire more greenware in the next few weeks. But seriously, welcome, and hopefully we'll see you at more board meetings coming up. And yeah, thank you.
All right, now I'll go over the agenda. So we have excellence in action tonight. We're going to have hearing from members of the community. We have several consent agenda items that the board will go over. Couple of discussion items, my 2024 superintendent, 2024, 2025 superintendent goals. We are receiving an update from Assistant Superintendent Swenson and Mr. Hatstrom regarding school security overview. We're bringing a couple of things to action that have come before the board and work session, the Edina e-Learning Plan. And we're also bringing forward a proposal for an approval of a collective bargaining agreement. And then we have several policies for review. We'll have leadership and committee updates, my updates, and adjourn.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley. Our next agenda item is excellence in action. And for this month's excellence in action, Community Education will be presenting the Green Superheroes of Science Teen Teachers Program, a partnership between Edina Public Schools and the University of Minnesota Extension/4H. Edina High School students were teen teachers engaging younger students in science experiments that address the environmental impact of plastics. I'd like to welcome Hannah Christensen, our Community Involvement Program Supervisor. Welcome.
Thank you. I am filling in last minute for Cheryl Gunness, so, and I also tried to get some of our teen teachers here, but everyone is having fun at camp and fishing and whatnot, so you're stuck with me for today. But yes, like you said, this is a collaboration between Community Ed, Edina Public Schools, and Excited Targeted Services alongside our partners at the University of Minnesota Extension. So the University of Minnesota 4H created this Green Superheroes of Science curriculum. So the idea is that teens are going to teach younger elementary school students all about science, plastics, but really the goal is to engage youth in experiments that address the environmental impact of plastics while also building skills in science and also engineering So for us, this looks like seven 11- to 14-year-old teen teachers, all Edina Public School students. They had to fill out an application, they had to tell us why they loved or were interested in science, or were interested in teaching other students. That was followed up by an eight-hour training facilitated by the University of Minnesota 4H. This was a super cool experience because, yes, the curriculum makers were there, but the facilitators were also teen teachers. So we had teens teaching teens who were about to go teach elementary school students. Once they were ready, they practiced all the experiments at Excited or Summer Targeted Services. Those seven teen teachers taught 59 second graders with a lot of energy alongside myself and Matt Gabrielson from Highlands. And then those students put a combined of 216 service hours in two weeks, which was incredible. So cool, I could talk about this all day. This is our, an example of one of our activities that they did. So all the activities were really simple, a lot of baking soda and vinegar type experiments. The last one, which was both a highlight for the teen teachers and the students participating, was creating a water soaker out of a water bottle. So we took recycled water bottles, they filled it up with water, poked a hole in it, saw how far the water would go, and then they made adjustments and estimations and hypotheses about how they could make the water go even further or spray with more force. And then our teen teachers ad-libbed at the end and let all the students spray them, which is what you see in this picture. And like I said, it was a highlight, it was hot, it was fun. It was a really great way to get them thinking. And since I couldn't have any of my friends with me today, I just included some feedback that we got from them that stuck out to me. So some student said, I love teaching the kids about the environment and seeing them see the relationship between the experiments that they did and helping the environment. I thought it was really fun, and the kids really enjoyed the experiments, and it was really fun and a completely new experience for me. I also want to add that it was so cool seeing their, this teen teacher's pedagogy develop throughout the week and kind of figure out how they're going to deliver this material to different students who might have different understandings or interests besides the environment. And that's all I got.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have one, was this the first year that we were doing this?
Yes, yep, thank you for clarifying, yep. So we're hoping to keep this going, but it was a new experience for myself, for 4H, for Excited, and this is our first time with our teen teachers.
And then for the applicants, for the teens that were going to be the teachers, how did they actually find out about this program?
We mostly disseminated it through the middle schools directly, maybe some targeting of science teachers, you have any students that you may be interested. Another part of my job is coordinating Hornet Central at Southview, and so my counterpart at Valleyview. We also were trying to engage students that we thought might be interested and might not have as many summer opportunities as those others, but really it was a big collaboration with the middle schools.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. This looks like a great program.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is hearing from members of the public. When you signed in and asked to speak, you acknowledge an understanding and adherence to Board Policy 206, which are community comment, which are our community comment guidelines. Pursuant to this policy, each speaker has a maximum of three minutes to speak. When those three minutes are up, you must conclude your remarks. If you do not wrap up quickly, your time allotment will end. This time is not designated to address items concerning specific staff or students, and personal attacks by anyone at the podium are unacceptable. If this happens, you will be warned, and if you persist, you will no longer be able to continue remarks. Any feedback about district employees needs to go to their respective site-level leader, the superintendent, or be submitted in writing to the board. As such, public comment period will be limited to 15 individuals. Per our updated protocols, the school board will give first priority to Edina Public School students, individuals who have children attending school in the district, individuals who reside in the district, or individuals who are employed by the district. The school board will give second priority to individuals who wish to address a specific item that is on the agenda for that meeting. If your form was not filled out completely, you are not eligible to be called to speak. All efforts have been made to ensure multiple viewpoints are expressed. Multiple individuals expressing the same viewpoint or multiple people from the same organization should consider consolidating their remarks. If you are not chosen to speak, your voice is not any less important to us, and please consider sending us an email at schoolboard@edinaschools.org. Finally, during public comment period, our role as a, our role as a board is to listen, but this is not the place for the board to resolve any concerns, and as such, no comments will be made from the board. Issues will potentially be referred to the superintendent for appropriate follow-up. Thank you for your cooperation. And we do have an individual that has signed up to speak tonight, Susan Crowley. You're welcome to come to the podium.
Good evening, members of the school board, parents, and everyone, and guests. My name is Susan Crowley. I am a mother of an 11-year-old daughter who is entering middle school in a few short weeks, and also a local golf coach. I am speaking today to discuss a pressing issue that significantly impacts the learning environment and overall well-being of our children, which is the unrestricted use of smart devices in our schools. I firmly believe that implementing and enforcing a strict policy around smart device usage is essential for the following reasons. First, let's consider the role of our teachers. Our dedicated educators are here to guide, instruct, and inspire our children. However, the constant presence of smart devices in classrooms transforms teachers into monitors and continually policing these gadgets rather than focusing on their primary educational responsibilities. This distraction not only hampers the teacher's ability to deliver effective instruction, but also disrupts the learning process for all students. Secondly, the impact on our students' cognitive functions cannot be overlooked. Research consistently shows that our young brains are particularly susceptible to the distractions posed by smart devices. The continuous notifications and the allure of social media make it challenging for our students to concentrate on their studies. This constant shift of focus undermines their ability to absorb and retain information, ultimately affecting academic performance. Moreover, let's talk about the importance of face-to-face communication. The interpersonal skills our children develop through direct interaction are invaluable. These skills, eye contact, active listening, and empathy are the cornerstones of effective communication and collaboration. Overreliance on digital communication erodes these fundamental skills, leaving students ill-prepared for real-world and social interactions in the professional environment. We must also address the severe issue of bullying and its correlation with smart devices. Cyberbullying has become a rampant problem with devastating effects on students' mental health. The anonymity provided by digital platforms often emboldens bullies, making it easier to harass and demean others. This constant connectivity means that the torment doesn't end when the school day does. It follows children home, contributing to increased rates of depression and anxiety. Furthermore, the misconception that having a cellphone makes our children safer needs to be dispelled. While it's comforting to think that immediate contact is always available, the reality is that during school hours, children are under the supervision of trained professionals that you all have chosen in a controlled environment. In emergencies, schools have protocols in place to ensure student safety. The presence of a personal device is not only redundant, but also adds unnecessary stress and distraction.
Mrs. Crowley, can you wrap up your remarks, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
In conclusion, it is imperative that we enforce a strict policy on smart device usage within our school. By doing so, we can create a conducive learning environment where teachers can focus on learning, students can engage fully in their education, and the well-being of our children can be safeguarded. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak, and that was our only public comment tonight, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. We will now vote to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda is approved, and we're going to move on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item, our superintendent goals, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Stanley.
Thank you, Chair Ellenberg. So have had just a really good time working on goals and looking over the work that has been done the past three years as I move into the fourth year of setting goals. And I brought goals to the board work session a few weeks ago, and now I'm bringing them back, embedded some of the suggestions. Very specifically, there were suggestions about specifically stating the artifacts or measurement items that I would actually bring to the board at the end of the year or maybe for mid-year evaluation. So I modified and I add that, added that specific information for each goal area. Another request that the board had was for social, emotional, or culture and climate goal, very specific to teachers, that it be more quantitative. And so we use the Panorama Survey, and so I've set a goal based on Panorama Survey belonging. And so that metric is in there. In addition to that, I just provided a detailed outline of historical process and how the board got to actually adopting this model. I did link the entire MSBA evaluation model in there so that the board, each board member would have that information in detail, and how the MSBA model lays out how goals should be set and the different areas under MSBA that are to be evaluated. So hoping that that brings greater clarity, and I am open for questions or comments.
Board members, questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for adding the artifacts piece of it. That helps with a lot of clarity from my standpoint, but overall, thank you for the change.
I echo Director Arum's gratitude for that. And I had a question on the evidence for the belonging indicator. Can you remind me how much we've been seeing that growth in the past couple of years?
Yeah, so, sorry about that. So we started using the Panorama Survey in 2021, in the spring before I started. That first year, we saw some growth on average, it was two points. Last year, we saw, I believe it was five or six points, and so I've taken an average of that to determine the growth for the goal. I will say that even in those years, and the board received a report about this, general public, if you're wondering about it, board received a report in June, and so the full information should be available in the board packet, but we are making statistically significant growth in each one of those specific benchmark areas.
Other comments or questions? Director Birdman?
I just wanted to say thank you again, not only for the artifacts, but also the clarification I asked last time was where the strategic initiatives that were a part of the different performance goals, they were there before, but they were in a different sort of labeling. This makes it a little bit clearer for someone like me to be able to see that, so I appreciate that connection from that standpoint, and the level of detail that you provided in correlation of that was very helpful. So thank you.
I had one question slash piece of feedback, and I don't know, it has to do with the bullet point around the cellphone use under evidence of, I'm sorry, um... It's kind of a goal? Yeah, sorry, goal two, evidence of performance to the last bullet point. And I was just wondering, given some of the conversations that we've had about working with the board around policy and understanding some of like the security issues, I don't even know if it's for this document, quite frankly, but I was just wondering, is the ultimate goal for the year to have a district-wide, like, updated cellphone policy? And would that ultimately be the goal for you or us as a district? Or is the goal, is your goal right now reads more around getting updates from the assistant superintendent? So I wasn't sure, and that's my only question is...
So within the framework for MSBA, there is the actual goal that is set, the connection to the MSBA/MASA standards as well as our strategic plan priorities, and then there's evidence of performance. Under the evidence of performance, there are benchmarks. And so that isn't a goal to advise the assistant superintendent to frequently monitor cellphone protocol implementation and ensure the school board receives a detailed report on implementation efforts. That's a benchmark. That's a key indicator of progress that I am moving in the direction toward meeting my goal. So in their model, they do not call those benchmarks key indicators of progress. In the model that we use here, in the district that I use with Cabinet and Principals, we do have key indicators of progress. The artifact, what I would be providing you with is cellphone protocol implementation progress report, and that is scheduled to come to the board on the agenda in November. And that is to give you an update that will include a variety of different data points in relationship to where we're at with that. March 15th, we are required to have a policy around cellphones in place. It doesn't have to be a separate policy. Right now, we have information about cellphones in Policy 506, and we have information in cellphones in Policy 524. I think it will be up to the Policy Committee to determine whether or not they want to pull that information out into a separate policy, and I believe Director Gabe could talk about that, if that's the direction that we should go. So that's not a goal, it's not my goal to advise the superintendent. My ultimate goal is to make sure that we're supporting and improving and enhancing the district culture and climate, and the cellphone process is part of that.
Okay. Anything from anyone else?
I guess I have a question, but this may be, I guess about the cellphone plan that in, so in November, we would get a update on that plan that would already be instituted at that point?
Yes, so you'll remember that in May, the board received information from the task force about the recommendation, so for what we were going to do with the cellphone plan and protocol. And you'll remember that K8 cellphones are not to be used, they're away for the day, they will not be in the schools. And you'll remember that for 9/12, there, the task force brought forward that there would be a three-pronged protocol process. There will be times where, because teachers have students use their cellphones for learning at times, and so a teacher may say, no cellphones. A teacher may say, cellphones during this part of the lesson. Or a teacher may say, we will be using cellphones all during class. And so that... that is what the plan is. Now, in order to bring policy to the board, we know that we would have to bring that to you as late, the very latest, in January, because it would need to come to the policy committee in December. It would go to the board for first review in January. It would go into the board for second review in February, and then it would come to the board for final action in March. And so that's why you're not receiving multiple updates throughout the year, because we would bring you that update in November. We're going to take that information under the chair of the committee, Director Gable's direction. We will use that information to determine what the policy will look like. We'll work on that, and we'll bring that to policy committee again in December. We'll bring that first view to the board in January, get feedback. If there's any changes, we'll bring that second view in February, and then the board would actually act on that policy in March.
And then so if I can keep asking questions, that's fine. So when school starts here in a month, will there be a new policy enacted in the schools or not yet? When we have that update in November, will that be of the task force work?
So I think there's a couple of things. I think there's policy, and I think there's protocol. We will not have a new policy, because Policy 5, well, 524 is coming through tonight again. And then 506 has already been approved. So those are the policies right now. When protocol, yes, we do have a new protocol that will come into our systems. K8, and then 9/12, it's what I outlined before, which is a new protocol as well.
I guess as a board member, I guess I would have, I think that should have maybe come to the board prior to. I feel like we're instituting, and I guess we can call it a protocol. I feel like we're bringing a policy into our schools before we're necessarily approving it, or if we've really talked about it. I don't know if that's, and that's just me. I'm not saying that's the will of the board or anything like that. I don't know if other people feel that same way or completely different. I'd be interested to hear.
We did bring that to the board, though, in May.
I feel like as a board, I would like to have maybe talked more about that, in the sense that we, the task force was doing great work, but we didn't really know anything about that work going on. I guess I would have liked to have more of a robust discussion at the board table, considering we'll see things two and three times, either in our subcommittees or at the work session. Just speaking for myself, I know I've gotten questions from people in the community, email, things like that, saying, well, what's going to happen with this, and not having really a good sense of what that rollout looks like, or what that policy looks like. I mean, we can call it a procedure, we can call it a policy. It feels a lot like it's a policy. And we routinely update our policies, and I would like to hear from the board if people have feelings either way, to see if it's just me. And if it is, that's totally fine. But I feel like we could have had a much more robust discussion on a policy that's really going to impact every building in our district that has students in it. But that's just kind of my two cents on it. I'd be interested to see if other people have thought, or were kind of taken aback, because I, we don't want to have surprises at the board table, and I was pretty surprised hearing from other parents saying something's going to come forward. And we're going to hear from parents, obviously, that aren't happy with that. And if we don't have answers as board members, it's, we're going to either have egg on our face, or it's just going to be a lot more difficult to institute that procedural change or policy change, whichever we want to call it, if we don't have more information, especially at our level, in my opinion at least. But I'm interested to hear more.
So I'm going to suggest that any discussion about this, we move to either the retreat, or it becomes an agenda item of its own. That any further discussion here needs to be about specifically changes that we want for Dr. Stanley's goals. And that concerns that people might have about cellphones specifically that we address. Like I said, that it's a discussion point of itself, so we're not violating open meeting law for this agenda item in and of itself. I don't think it's necessary. The only thing I do want to address is that what we are rolling, we have not made any updates to policy, though, Elliot. I just want to make it clear that we haven't changed any sort of policy. So I think that that nothing is, nothing is being rolled out that is needed any sort of board approval, per se. So I just, I don't want anyone to think that we've missed some sort of step from a board process perspective. But I'm open to setting up additional time for us to discuss this at another work session, or like I said, at the retreat. I just don't want to violate open meeting law and discuss this further at this point in time, so.
Yeah, I think it warrants us maybe talking about putting it on another topic, or figuring out together, and maybe we can do that at the retreat or something. If we, because if I understood this, the report was going to come back to the board in November. And so maybe just outlining, even just having a conversation, the seven of us, of like what the process will look like. And I know, Dr. Stanley, I read in our back-to-school email that there will be correspondence going out to families this week, right? So families will have that information, so that's one of the steps in this process that people can expect on that. But I think we could certainly find time to talk about this as kind of a board and have it as an agenda item. I think that would be, because we are, you're right, we are, I mean, there's a lot of, we're hearing from members of the community. It's obviously in the news a lot, and so I think it's top of mind for a lot of people. So we could, we could spend some time putting it on an agenda item if the board wants.
And I'll just make one policy clarification. We do have language in our current policies that provide something related to cellphones that meets the legislative requirement, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Well, and the legislative requirement does not go into action until March 15th.
Right.
So we don't have to have anything legislatively in a policy until March 15th.
Right. The question was then, what were we going to do in terms of this? And so administratively, there's things that are being looked at, and then eventually it will come back through policy end of the discussion with the board as to how are we going to incorporate what clarity on the policy, whether that's in current policies, or we have to create a new policy around this topic. That's where that would then get to from that standpoint. That's my understanding from the policy committee's standpoint. That's where we were, that's the track we were on.
Right, and I think we're reluctant to put, until we see how this rolls out here in the fall, and we get that report in November, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to change the verbiage, because we'd have to come back and change it again. Should we change, should we decide to take it a step further, or adjust it? And during that conversation, I think, I made a note to myself, I will be very interested, as the chair of the policy committee, to see what the will of the board is. If the will of the board is, we would like to have a specific policy about this, or if they would like to see it embedded in one of our existing policies. So that's something that I know I will be looking.
I'll make a motion to create, discussing the institution of cellphone procedure at a retreat? Oh, I was just saying if we need to do that, because it seems as though there's some discussion willing to have there. I'll make a motion if we need to.
Oh, there we go. And if anyone has any further comments on Dr. Stanley's goals, if someone wants a comment related to the verbiage about cellphones as related to Dr. Stanley's goals, I think that's open for discussion. Okay. Why, thank you. Now we will move on to our next discussion item, and that is school security overview. I'd like to welcome Nate Swenson, Assistant Superintendent, and Alex Hatstrom, Emergency Management and Safety Coordinator.
Chair Ellenberg, members of the board. Dr. Stanley, thanks so much for the opportunity to come and share with you a little bit of information about our safety and security plans for Edina Public Schools. Joining me tonight is Alex Hatstrom. You all met him earlier. He's our new Emergency Management and Safety Coordinator. And full disclosure, he will be leading the presentation. Should you have any questions during the presentation, please let us know, and we'll be happy to take them at the end of the presentation as well. Thank you.
School board, thank you very, very much for your time. It's good to see you all again. For the public, again, my name is Alex Hatstrom. I am the Edina Public Schools' new Emergency Management and Safety Coordinator. As you are all aware, Edina Public Schools is very committed to the safety and security of all students, staff, and visitors to our institutions. As a testament to that commitment to safety and security, and under Dr. Stanley's leadership, I was brought on just last month to advance our safety, security, and emergency management policies, procedures, and preparedness throughout the school district. Starting from the district level, we currently have a district emergency response team, which is outlined in Policy 806, and is comprised of all district cabinet members and leadership staff. This district-level emergency response team is designated to bring organization and structure to incident response, and is essentially there as a support and guidance and resource mechanism to each of our schools. The structure of the district emergency response team is based on the FEMA's Incident Command System structure, but is tailored to the needs of the Edina Public School District. At the building level, we have school or site-specific building emergency response teams, which are comprised of school-level staff that are not typically classroom-facing staff members, meaning that typically they're, who serve on our BERT team are front office staff, administrative staff, school nurses, and the like. And they are our operational component in the schools. They're the boots-on-the-ground first-to-respond staff members to respond to incidences or emergencies in our schools. And they are specifically trained to uphold the safety of our students, staff, and visitors, and maintain a healthy and safe environment. Our BERT members, as well as our district emergency response team, receive training throughout the year. They do so at the beginning of the year, then periodically throughout on various topics relating to safety and security, so the public can be assured that their children are safe while they're in our custody throughout the school year. As you know, the Edina Public School District adopted the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocol. If there was an emergency or any type of incident that occurs within our schools, the first action would be one of these five steps typically. So for each type of incident, there's a standard response protocol to start incident response with. From hold, which is typically, students remain in classrooms as business as usual for some kind of maintenance issue or low-priority issue in the school, to secure and lock down, which have to do with threat response, evacuate, and shelter, which are common, but have to do with, or formerly called fire drills and tornado drills and things of that nature. Annually, our leadership team conducts a safety and security refresher course, and that was just conducted just last week during our 2024 Leadership Advance. And throughout the year, our leadership staff, both at the school and district levels, will continue to train on both best practices and procedures that Edina Public Schools has in place for emergency management. Policy 806, which is the district's emergency management policy, outlines our response protocols and things of the like. That policy has been updated to include my position, the Emergency Management Safety Coordinator, which is a new position to the Edina Public School District. Previous to me, that position was a supplemental set of job duties to a different director-level position. So again, as a testament to this district's commitment to safety and security, everything emergency management, safety, and security is now in my role, which is a dedicated position focusing on that. And so Policy 806 has been updated to reflect new language for reporting within the district to myself. As you know, our police and fire partnerships are incredibly important with us. We collaborate closely with our police and fire partners at Edina Police Department and Edina Fire Department. We conduct quite a bit of training and tabletop exercises with them, and we'll continue to do so throughout the year. In fact, I just met with their leadership staff about a week ago or so, and came up with some ideas to do tabletop discussions and continue collaborating on safety and security. So our protocols are in line with their response protocols for more of a seamless interaction to improve safety in our schools. As you know, about a year ago or so, we implemented our Raptor Visitor Management Software, which is a layer of security that we have for all visitors to each of our schools. It is a software application that allows visitors to be identified through their government-issued photo ID, and it compares their information to a database that Raptor hosts, and it allows us to verify visitors have, are safe to enter our schools. And our staff have been using it for about a year now, and they have commented that it's easy to use. It provides a layer of security, and it's an efficient system, so they seem to be quite proud, or quite happy with it. For 2024 to 2025 school year, the goals of my position are to continue hosting ongoing safety and security training events with our school staff and leaders, host tabletop exercises with our district emergency response team members and our police and fire leaders, to continue collaborating with safety and security strategies, solidifying our reunification sites and having backup plans in case of a disaster, and perform safety and security audits at each of our schools to not only identify, but mitigate emerging safety and security risks to, again, keep our students, staff, and visitors safe. That is all I had for you. If you have any questions or comments, I would be happy to hear them.
Board members, questions or comments? Director Arum?
Two questions. One might not be for you, it might be for Daphne. From the I Love You Guys Foundation, the nomenclature and all the words, is that shared with the parents, or is that only shared with the staff at this point in time?
The I Love You Guys Standard Response Protocol is a public-facing set of instructions. So the hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter is posted publicly throughout our schools. The purpose of it is for students to be familiar with it as they graduate through our system, so there's a standardization in language. So there is a parent or guardian-facing documents to that outline and kind of highlight the standard response protocols using that same language.
And we do have a website that was created, and that was sent out to families. We send that out every year. And it has videos. It deeply outlines the standard response protocol, goes into the reasons why we're using it, things like that.
Thanks. I was just, I was mainly asking, because, you know, if a student sends a text message and says we're in lockdown, that can mean a lot of different things for people, but they might only use that one term, so I just didn't know if that was being socialized amongst that. And then the second question I have might be for you, Dr. Stanley. Last year, we did that kind of open-form security meeting. Is there a plan to do that again this year? Or is that, was that just a, in response, or a one-time event last year?
We don't have a plan to do that again this year. It was, we had just onboarded I Love You Guys and several other protocols, and we wanted the community to know about that. So that's why we held it last year. Is that something that the board would be interested in?
I'd be interested in hearing, you know, getting Alex on board and seeing where he kind of lands with things, and then maybe even every other, you know. But I don't feel, personally, I don't feel the need to have.
I don't feel the need to have one this year, unless it would come from you that you feel like you're hearing that.
That's fine with me. I was just asking.
I think it might be something good to integrate in like parent nights that we have at the sites, where parents are there, and we have administration available, again, to make it a to make it a normalized part of the culture, as opposed to um something special that you have a captive audience, um, so something like that, potentially, but I don't feel the need to have a, a special event this year. Any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm, um, I just had a comment really, and I wanted to welcome you to our school system, and I'm really thrilled that you're here, and I also just wanted to let the community know that um appreciate Dr. Stanley for having this position, but also let the community know that um the fact we're creating this position doesn't mean that there is an elevation in security issues in our district, it's really an indicator about how um, how seriously we take the security of our students and our staff, and how important this is, and how complex security issues have become this day and age with um cyber issues um and things like that. So I just wanted to make sure the community understood um the reason behind the hire and really um give kudos to Dr. Stanley and your team, and I'm really excited to have you on board, and um also reiterate what um Director Arum said, um, to really pay attention to some of the language that we're using, and that there's a lot of emergencies that happen that um I know as a parent, my heart always goes to um a, a safety incident with my kiddos at the school, and there's a lot of sick, um, safety things that happen sometimes, like uh toast getting in, uh, smoke or something happening that we're trying to use consistent verbiage. So if parents can help us in the partnership between parents and um school and the community of really understanding the language that we're using and why we might be using some of that language, it can really help us out um in understanding what's going on in our um school system, so that was all I had to say. So thank you very much.
And just to add, that is on the Edina Public Schools website, under safety and security, you can find all of that language defined and outlined explicitly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
That was our last discussion item, so we'll move to our action items. Um, do I have a motion to approve the Edina E-Learning Day Plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to welcome Jody DeStain-Huber, Director of Teaching and Learning, Nathaniel Lind, Lindley is here. Oh, I would like to welcome Jody DeStain-Huber, Director of Teaching and Learning. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, uh, Board Directors, uh colleagues and community members. Um, the Edina E-Learning Plan was brought to you in July for a discussion by our Director of Media and Technology, Nathaniel Lindy, and Brianna Buck, our new Digital Learning Coordinator. Um, there are no changes to the plan in front of you right now, and it is here for action tonight, so if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take them, please, thank you.
I just have a quick question, which again, might be for Daphne. Um, I was wondering what our plan was for communicating this plan and the time around it. I just remember last year, I think we communicated in the winter, and we have some parents that were confused that we actually were having an E-Learning Day, so I was just wondering when we were going to communicate the updated plan. And if that's not on the radar yet, that's fine, I just.
Yeah, we'd still need to finalize a date for when we're gonna send that out.
No problem.
I, I can see historically what we've done is, once it's approved, principals send that information out in their newsletters to make sure that families have it.
Okay, thank you.
And we're excited that it is here in front of you in August to be approved this early, so that that communication can happen.
Anything else? Um, all those in favor of approving the Edina E-Learning Day Plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The Edina E-Learning Day Plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five is approved.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six Collective Bargaining Agreement between Independent School District two seventy-three and the Edina Professional Association of Support Staff?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to welcome Sonia Saylor, Director of Human Resources, and Merk Woodard, Director of Business Services. I didn't know if you were planning on coming up, but you are now, so.
Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and members of the school board, um, Mr. Woodard and I am, are pleased to announce that the Edina Professional Association of Support Staff, commonly referred to in Edina as EPAS, um, have ratified the tentative agreement that is before you for a new two-year collective bargaining agreement effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, our school district's EPAS uh unit includes our department specialists, our principal administrative assistants, our facility schedulers, welcome center specialists, due process specialists, and our media and office assistants. Our negotiation teams work collaboratively and creatively to reach a settlement that both values the important work that they do every day, um, and also respects the school board's financial parameters. We would like to commend our EPAS negotiations team comprised of Doc Kirchner, Nancy Knudsen, Kim McGuire, and Patty Lewis for their dedication to this important process. The financial highlights of the proposed agreement include step advancement for eligible employees in both years of the agreement, and retroactive application of the new agreement to July one, twenty twenty-four, a four percent improvement to the wage schedule in both years, um, an increase to the school district's contribution towards single health insurance to better align EPAS to other similarly situated employee groups that will go into effect as of January one, twenty twenty-five, and a twenty-five dollar per month district contribution towards dental insurance as of January one, twenty twenty-five. Language was modified within the agreement to communicate clarity, um, align with past practices, and provide consistency with other school district agreements. Position classifications were modified to acknowledge and align positions with similar essential job duties and levels of responsibility. The two-year total package for this proposed agreement is seven million, six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which represents, represents an increase of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Using the Minnesota School Board's Association's costing formula, the two-year percentage increases seven point nine two percent. This tentative agreement is within the authority um provided to the school district's negotiations team by the school board, and as a result, we seek your approval for this agreement. Do you have any questions?
Director Gabler?
Thank you both for your work on this, um, and thank you to the EPAS members that served on the committee too for the work on this, um, this is good work. I just had a general question, um, for my own understanding, I noticed that in the marked-up version, like, there was a, appendix B which had an MOU that was taken out, is that pretty standard practice, or is that, like, how did those come to be, and how do they kind of work themselves out of contracts as well?
So we actually moved some of that language into the contract from the MOU, so there was an MOU that specifically talked about a performance incentive based on um job duty, job duties and performances, performance of EPAS members as evaluated by their supervisor. And so we did take that language specifically around the performance incentive and put it into the body of the contract. Um, often MOUs are added to contracts to try something out, and then if it is something that's going to continue beyond that first um two-year term, then you look at moving it into the body of the contract. In this particular case, it had been there for, I think, two or at least two rounds, I think probably three rounds, actually, I knew it had to have been at least three rounds, um, because it was before it came to the district. So the, we looked at it, it seemed to be working, we're going to tweak some of the performance requirements, and we talked that through with our, um, with the negotiations team, and then moved the specifics about the incentive into the body of the contract.
Thank you for explaining that, Chair.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Um, all those in favor of approving the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six Collective Bargaining Agreement between Independent School District two seventy-three and the Edina Professional Association of Support Staff, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District two seventy-three and the Edina Professional Association of Support Staff is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve Policies one oh three, one thirteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, five twenty-four, and eight oh six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will turn it over to Policy Chair Karen Gabler.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. Um, board members, you will notice we had no policies up for discussion this month, where you, I'm sure you were all missing that, um, that the policies that are before you for action, there have been no changes to these policies since they were reviewed and up for discussion at the July eighth meeting. So are there any further questions? All right, I'll turn it back to you then, to Chair Allenberg.
Okay, do I, um, all those in favor of approving Policies one oh three, one thirteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, five twenty-four, and eight oh six, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, the policies are approved. Um, do we have any board leadership or committee updates? Okay, do we have any superintendent updates?
Um, I just want to give a shout-out to our community education program, they held programming that they're gonna come and talk about a little bit more in detail, but that had eight thousand students in programs this summer, which was absolutely incredible, and how they do that with what seems like effortless, I have no how, no idea how they do that, but I had a chance to attend a few classes, and the classes were absolutely outstanding, high engagement with students, and I'm just really proud of them for their, for their growth with their programs, and then of course, school starts before we know it, and so um, we have our band together night on August twenty-second, and all of the proceeds for that goes towards supporting uh our mental health efforts in the district, and they have quite a few wonderful bands that are um scheduled to perform, and just really encouraging the community to come out and join us um as we work to support the mental health efforts in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Um, without any other content for the meeting, um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, the motion is approved and the meeting is adjourned, thank you.